All right, great. Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, May 14th, 2018 Evanston City Council meeting. The Administration Public Works and the Planning and Development Committee were working hard, so we're starting this at 11:10 PM. Alderman Revelle is out, had surgery recently, so she is out, so we've got eight aldermen here this evening. I have two announcements. One, this is Mental Health Month. I don't know if we have anyone here from the Mental Health North Shore. Let me just say this, in the one year that I've been on the job, it's become very, very apparent to me, both in interactions that I have around the community as well as correspondence to me, that mental health is a real issue in our community. And I'm glad that there are so many different organizations and people working on the issue, and I think we need to continue to think about the more that we can do up here to help address this issue, because I think it's a very real and difficult issue in this community. Secondly, this is National Police Week around the nation. It's May 13th and 19th. We actually, Evanston Police Week is May 20th to the 26th. So we're going to be honoring our police department in a couple different ways. Just to give folks a real quick, and I'm not going to go into this entire proclamation, but just so folks have an understanding, there are over 900,000 law enforcement officers serving communities in the United States, including 159 sworn officers here in Evanston. There have been more than 21,000 officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty throughout the United States' history, dating back to the first known death in 1791, including three members of the Evanston Police Department, that being Officer George Dougherty in 1885, Officer James Shea in 1918, and Officer Warren Omsler in 1927. So we're very fortunate here that we haven't had an officer die in the line of service since 1927, but the risk that our officers face every day is real to protect us and to protect our community. So, thank you to the Evanston Police Department and what they do every day for us. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. As you all know, we have started the first steps of our budget process for 2019. The first step with that is a priority-based budgeting process. We have been to the council on two occasions since the first of the year to talk about this, most recently on April 30th, where the council reviewed a list of 54 programs to be considered for a public outreach survey. That number was further refined down to 46 programs, and that survey was released last Thursday. We've had quite a good response so far, nearly 1,000 responses to the survey since it was put up online last Thursday. It is available online, it's available in paper form. We will have a Spanish-language version available of it shortly. Others' languages, people can call 311, and we'll make arrangements to fill that out. In addition, there is information on the website with additional detail about the various programs that are being considered. If I can, I'd like to just take a moment to talk about the process in sort of a more global way. I think there's maybe some misunderstanding that this priority-based budgeting process is the only step in the 2019 budget process. Normally, the budget process begins with some community outreach in September. The budget comes to the council in October, and then there are deliberations through the month of October into November. This year, starting in the month of May, the priority-based budgeting process is really meant to help provide some direction. I think the community is saying that they don't want to see additional taxes, fees, and charges, that people like most of the services we're providing, and so how do we balance a budget when people are hesitant for new revenues and aren't looking to cut any expenditures? So, the purpose of the priority-based budgeting is really to try to get the community to provide some preferences on things that are important, things that are less important, and focusing on a bottom third of an initial list of about 150 services. But that is only a step. We will come back to the city council on June, I'm sorry, June 18th, and we'll share information about what we've gathered at this phase, and we'll get additional direction from the council. We'll do additional work through the month of June and July, come back to the council, have a meeting scheduled on the 5th Monday of July, on July 30th. We'll then check back in with the council at your meeting in August, and then have additional community outreach certainly during the month of September. So this is a multiple-step process. Areas that do well in priority-based budgeting, you know, certainly that is an information point, areas that people feel that we can do some additional evaluation of as an information point, but this is not a contest, this is not direct democracy balloting. We're just trying to provide some framework for the council to work and basically come up with a balanced budget that's not only balanced on an operating side, but also looks to replenish reserves and perhaps put additional dollars toward both pensions and capital projects. So that's what the process is. We want to make sure the community is aware of that. Police people can go to our website, citiveviston.org, for more information. But again, the priority-based budgeting is really a first step of a much longer process, really to help bring a balanced budget and a responsible budget for the community for the fiscal year, starting in January, when the council makes final decisions sometime in the month of November. That's all I have.
Terrific. Thank you, and thanks for that explanation. City Clerk, do you have any announcements?
I did not have an announcement, but I will quickly announce that next month, on June 26th, the Clerk's Office will begin a series of educational programming, and this one will be with parliamentarian Joan Bundy. The title will be "How to Get Out of Council Before Midnight," so I thought it was relevant to mention that tonight. And so the lesson will be about parliamentary procedure as well as the council role, so members of the community, and I guess three aldermen are welcome to come as well to join that discussion. That's it.
Excellent. That would be great for me, since my bedtime's usually about 9:30, so, all right. We have seven people that have signed up for public comment. I appreciate that there's still people out there and engaged. You guys all know the rules. We set aside 45 minutes. With seven people, everybody will be given up to three minutes if they need it. I'll give you a little nudge if you're 15 seconds to the three minutes, and just ask that you wrap it up. First speaker we have today is Betty Esther, then Darius Major, and then Jackie Prince.
Good evening. Good evening to everyone. On behalf of the Citizen Network of Action, I would like to request that the city staff do a presentation of item SP1 and SP2 live on YouTube to explain to the community, and especially the young people, as to what these ordinance will do for them, and how it will affect them, and how it benefit the community. Our mean generation, the young people from 18 to 25, they are on YouTube. We don't see them here much, but we do need to let them know what we are, you are deciding here and how it's going to affect them. So to engage them, I encourage you to do the presentation for item SP1 and SP2 on YouTube. Okay. During your discussion this evening in the AP for item A3-6, with the money that came from the transfer station advance, the transportation and the tip, I thought the fees, and if I might be wrong, and I didn't have time to fully get all of those documents, but the fees that was collected after the settlement was supposed to go to the city and in the city general funds. If I'm wrong, then before you start spending the money, I think that need to be checked out fully, so we know what money we are spending, and if that is correct. I don't think it was meant to be constantly given to the neighborhood. It was supposed to go into the general funds to benefit the larger community. Also, you passed the ordinance, and we talked about affordable housing, small housing, and there will be a developer coming before you, and he's doing two units on a small lot that does not hold those two families' units. And one of the things he's hoping and he's saying, "Well, I'm going to make one affordable." Whoopie, great! But it's at 80%. That is not a benefit to the community for what we have been fighting for, and you put forth for rental, saying that the rental units we should be starting at 60% and below. So if we're going to allow them to do 80% of the rental income, then we are not helping the people that we say that we were supposed to. So that needs to be looked at very carefully, and it's a hard decision. Yes, we do need housing here, but we do need to be making it affordable for the people that needs them.
Thank you, Ms. Esther. Okay. And-- Ms. Esther, yeah, we're way over our time. I should probably, I need to be just conscious of everybody's time in this room.
Give me a minute, stop talking, please, and I'll be finished. Because these people here is also going to be looking at this budget, because this budget is going to affect them. So let's not start doing double whammy on them, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esther.
Thank you.
Darius Major, Jackie Prince, and then Madeline Decray. Let's see, do we have Darius Major? If not, Jackie? All right, and then we'll have Madeline, and then after Madeline will be Albert Gibbs.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. I have a new subject that I would like to speak about. Just maybe like 30, 45 minutes ago, I was sitting in the middle room on the second floor, just, I don't even know what you call it. I call it the Fleetwood Jordane Art Center, which is, excuse me?
That's what it's called.
Okay, great. So you have artwork, you know, about black people or for black people, whatever, and I'm sitting there, and Kimberly Richardson, I don't even get to sit. She comes in there and she informs me that that area of the building is closed. Now, I've been coming to these meetings on and off, two, three years. Never has that building been closed at 5:00. She told me that that room closes at 5:00, and I told her that that's not true, and she says it is true. Second of all, she didn't even introduce herself. I don't know who she is from Adam. I don't know why she's approaching me, and I don't know what my crime is this time. She told me, "You were going to open the windows and look like you were going to get comfortable." Well, I was. These meetings are long. I'm waiting for the next meeting. People are having several conversations here. I would like to get in there, sit down, and have my woo-sah moment. I don't understand why that's a problem. So, ever since your Assistant City Manager Erica Storely saw me in a conference room, oh my God, she has sent her city workers to watch me, see what I'm doing, and I just would like your city workers to do their job under their job description and under their job specifications. I'm not sure if she's on the clock, I'm not sure if she's getting paid, but to me, this is black-on-black crime. I want to sit down, I want to open a window, I want to rest, and I want to be prepared and not be hoarse for this meeting. So now my focus is totally off the subjects that I wanted to stick on. Please realize that this is a city meeting, these are city workers. You work for the constituents. They don't work for you. I have a great conversation and relationship with the people who treat me respectfully. She informed me that I'm combative, depending on a person's position. That is not me. So, you guys need to know your role, you're trying to tell me to know my role, and I don't appreciate that. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jackie. Next up, we've got Madeline Decray, and then Albert Gibbs, and then it looks like Vivian Killabrew. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing names.
Evening, everyone. My name is Madeline Decree. Hello, everyone at home, if you're still up. Okay, first, tonight, I would like to touch on our global situation. What our President Trump, and if anyone thinks or believes that this matter that is happening in Israel with the Palestinians will not affect us and the United States now and much more down the road, is sadly mistaken, in my opinion. I listened to some facts, I think they're facts, from different TV stations, different radio stations, both sides of these countries. Many Jewish peoples and many Palestinians did not want this violence, this killing amongst themselves. What is happening? What happened? I believe both countries should have their own state. Why not? North Korea, South Korea, for decades, these people, these two countries, were at each other throats, pretty much. Now, since our President Trump talked his talk on his Twitter machine, or whatever it is, and gave his disrespect in his opinions, these two men are smiling, shaking hands with each other. China, Japan, what's happening there? Do you really think, do we really think that these people have forgotten about Hiroshima? I don't think so. Do we really need another war here or there? The budget, 2019 budget program is on the chopping board. Many needed programs are on their chopping lists. Tonight, the only comment I will make will be thread lightly, folks. Times are hard for the city, times are hard for the Evanstonians. I also would like to add, the council members, no, back up. I would like to know, and I would like to ask the council members, what about the timing of the speeches? What about the transferring of your comments to someone else? For 16 years, Lorraine Martin, our mayor then, she was fine with that. Our mayor, Tisdale, was fine with that, as far as I know. No one did it that often, but once in a while, we have to do it to get it straightened out. So I ask you, Mayor, what is your problem with people during that? There had two ladies here. I think they were from India. A mother and a daughter who came up here and spoke eloquent speakers, and they always finished on time, majority of the time. I love that. I'm still trying to do that, and I miss them. Thank you very much.
You do a pretty good job. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Decree. All right, Albert Gibbs? Do we have Al--? Oh, he left? Okay. Thank you. Vivian Killabrew? Doreen Price? All right, we're up to you, Doreen.
Well, I'm very glad that Betty spoke first, as usual, and then after listening a little bit from the earlier planning and development meeting, sorry, Mr. Mayor and council members. So, I've summarized some of the things that have come to mind, especially in light of what she said about the 80% housing. First of all, the public benefits versus law, I'm going back to Alderman Wynn, and I thought that was awesome, that she is vocalizing a lot of what residents feel, including myself, that if it's a law, we should make more laws that increase and up the ante with regard to someone wanting to come here to develop. And I've seen developers, obviously, with regard to this development plan, have community values and share community values, and I can't say enough good about this particular developer and what they intend to do and why they intend to do it, and it just keeps going on and on and on. So, yes, Alderman Rainey, I'm very pleased that you're able to attract the type of people that are going to think of our community, again, with regard to what Alderman Wynn said. And then the affordable housing, in terms of being Judy's comment about affordable housing and the community, not necessarily affordable housing, but indirectly, that we're a community of homes and we're communities where you want to have neighborhoods, and I think preserving that aspect and having developers that can come in with creative ideas that integrate things instead of standalone, uptall, high, and unrelated to anything else or perhaps inducing increased burdens. And I thought of the increased burdens of a particular development in 727 Oak, if it's going to charge above-market rates for rents, that means that with your, even with your adjustment for affordable housing, people are paying above-market rents for what they could be paying and who can't afford it, plus above-market rates with regard to taxes. That's not fair. With regard to our great developer here, the only thing that can come up, and he's amenable to changing things based on community needs, I see him as someone who could work on this somehow, and that's the 80% limit instead of the 50% limit to help with affordability. I pray that you find a solution to that in some way, and that the community helps you with regard to that. Maybe it's in terms of something where there's additional revenue generation, that you could do something like that, or missed opportunity costs that justify helping you. But I see a developer that would work with us in terms of doing that. And then Comcast--
We've got 15 more seconds, Doreen.
Okay, Comcast. Does everyone, when I say Comcast, do people go like, "Ah!" Okay? If you don't, then you're not alive. Comcast should be charged extra costs for doing business with Evanston or be eliminated altogether. I've had nothing but problems, grief, and a tainted credit record, and I find out that's their modus operandi. They get new people, and then they force them into a situation where they owe money they don't owe, and put them in credit bureau reports, and then their credit is ruined forever for small amounts of money. So I suggest that we do something significantly different with Comcast. A7, one last thing. I've been reading a lot about communities using their own property to build. Can you build in lieu of what Smiley is doing that helps with affordable housing in some way, shape, or form? Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen. All right, and thank you, everyone, for your comments tonight. We're going to move into the Special Orders of Business. We've got two Special Orders of Business. The first one is SP1, Ordinance 15-0-18, creating Title IX, Chapter 18 of the Evanston City Code, Juvenile Law Enforcement Records. This is an outcome of the Alternative to Arrest Committee recommending the city council the adoption of this code. So is there a motion for introduction?
I'll move the motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Alderman Braithwaite, would you like to say a few things?
I want to be mindful of time, but I definitely want to acknowledge there's huge work on behalf of our staff. Alderman Wilson was a very big proponent of this, so I just want to acknowledge Alderman Wilson, Revelle Fleming, very detailed work of Patrick Keenan Devlin, as well as Carolyn Fraser. Ericov, thank you very much for all of your help and support to keep us moving. Kevin Brown, DC Pickett, Sergeant Garner, Becky Beiler, Karen Demarest, and if I forgot anybody, I apologize. I hope that, you know, the timing of this is important, but there was so much more work that we would love to be able to share at a later date. So thank you very much to all involved for getting us to this point.
Terrific. And this is one work product, so to speak--
Yeah.
--of your committee. Your committee continues to work, and there'll be more things forthcoming.
Chief Eddington stepped out. Is there any reason, well, I know it's an ordinance, that we couldn't move it for introduction and action?
With the consent of the council, no.
Okay. Seeing none, would you like to motion that?
Yeah, I'd like to move this for introduction and action.
Second.
Okay. All right, seeing no lights, all in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me? Do I, oh, it's an ordinance, so I have to do a roll on that.
And I would happily do a roll on this one.
All right, all right, Clerk.
Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ruth Simmons--
Aye.
Alderman Suffordin, Alderman Rainey--
Aye.
Alderman Fleming--
Aye.
Alderman Fisk--
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite--
Aye.
And Alderman Wynn.
All right, Ordinance 15-0-18, Updating the Juvenile Law Enforcement Records passes the Evanston City Council on a vote of 8 to 0. Let's move to SP2, Ordinance 65-0-18, Amending Portions of Title 11, Chapter 1 of the Evanston City Code for the Expungement of Juvenile Administrative Hearing Records. This also is coming out of the Alternatives to Arrest Committee that was formed. Is there a, this is for introduction, I don't know. If you'd like to change it again, Alderman Braithwaite, or motion?
We can, yeah. I'd like to make an amendment, Mayor, and move for introduction and action for this evening.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a very brief note to share that Carolyn Fraser and members of her Northwestern staff met with our Evanston Police Department. I know that we've had some issues in the past, but, you know, as a result of their discussion and looking at the records, I think that it's going to be more comprehensive and easier for our residents to understand. And the other thing that Ms. Fraser shared, that she really praised our Evanston Police Department and how well they keep records, so, I mean, I know that I can be critical, and our police are under a lot of scrutiny these days nationwide, but she wanted to make sure that we made that statement, that our police department is actually doing a really good job with keeping our juvenile records. So I wanted to pass that along.
Thank you, thank you. Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, I just actually wanted to echo what Ms. Esther said in terms of making sure that, I'm sure they'll do this, but making sure that our police force is communicating these new ordinances and how they work, and if there's new forms and, you know, whatever they entail, that we are making sure that we communicate this out to the public. I think the public will be very excited to know, you know, that this is now something that we're doing, and then also to be able to understand the steps that they need to take as citizens if, by chance, their juveniles are involved with the police.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming, and I agree. I thought that was a great suggestion by Ms. Esther. All right, so seeing no more lights, we've got a motion that was seconded for introduction and action. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please, on SP2?
Alderman Wilson--
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons--
Aye.
Alderman Suffordin, it's 11 o'clock at night. Alderman Rainey--
Aye.
Alderman Fleming--
Aye.
Alderman Fisk--
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite--
Aye.
And Alderman Wynn.
All right, SP2, Ordinance 65-0-18, Amending the City Code for the Expungement of Juvenile Administrative Hearing Records passes the Evanston City Council on a vote to 8 to 0. A big thanks again to the Alternatives to Arrest Committee and the good work that you're doing. Look forward to the additional work. Let's go ahead and move on to the Consent Agenda. Administration and Public Works these days is Alderman Fleming, so if you would mind taking us through M1 and then taking us through APW.
Yep, let me just find M1 here. Approval of M1, or, Mr. Mayor, I move for consent agenda approval of M1 amendments for the regular city council meeting as of April 23rd, 2018, as well as April 30th, 2018. Administration Public Works tonight cover payroll.
Quick question, the minutes. Clerk, did you circulate the, there were some revisions on those?
I apologize, no, we did not circulate the revisions, but they were made.
I did see the, actually, the Assistant Clerk circulated the--
Oh, yes, that is--
Okay, okay. All right, very good.
Just a correction.
Go ahead, Alderman Fleming. Does someone want to pull the minutes off for the staying on the consent? Okay. All right, Alderman Fleming, you want to do A1?
Yeah, payroll dated April 2nd through April 15th, 2018, in the amount of $2,777. Yeah, payroll dated April 2 through April 15, 2018, in the amount of $2,771,899.38, as well as payroll April 16 through April 29, 2018, $3,193,928.62. We also had the bills list dated May 15, 2018, in the amount of $4,165,673.45. Bank of America February 2018 credit card activity, these were items held over from our February 23 city council meeting, the amount of $1,716.90. We also moved for the purchase of three vehicles for the Public Works Agency. The amounts were three, I'm sorry, $36,995 for a Crane Courier model vehicle. Let's see, sorry, a lot of numbers. Also, a vehicle for the amount of $276,825.
Just a correction, that was $267,825.
Thank you, thank you. And then our last vehicle will be in the amount of $369,111, sorry, $116.58. Those were moved forward. We had a revised purchase of one vehicle from the Public Works Agency. This was approved initially on April 9, 2018, but we had a corrected amount tonight that we approved, and the new amount was $206,258, $206,258. That was approved. Contract renewal for Crave Concessions LLC for 2018 lakefront concession, that was approved for the new contract at, a one-year contract renewal between City of Evanston and Crave for the Church Street, Clark Street food and drink stands for the lakefront mobile concessions. Crave will pay the city $10,000 for the privilege of this permit. The contract with First Student and Parks Recreation and Community Service Department, 2018 summer bus transportation. The staff is authorizing that we execute this contract for the amount not to exceed $3175. They were the lowest bidder, that was approved. First quarter financial report was accepted and put on file for 2018. A3.7 disposal of waste transfer tipping station was pulled off of the consent agenda, we need to make some corrections. A4 Resolution 33-R-18 was approved for action. Resolution 28-R-18 was also approved for action. Resolution 31-R-18 was approved for action. A7 was kept in committee. A8, the Resolution 19-R-18, was approved for action, and A9 is also pulled off of committee. We need to discuss that. We also have the remaining items of A10, which is Ordinance 25-0-18. A11, which is Ordinance 51-0-18. A12, Ordinance 53-0-18. A13, Ordinance 54-0-18. And A14, Ordinance 55-0-18. A move approval.
Second.
All right, Alderman Fisk, would you like to take us through the Planning and Development Committee?
I'd be happy to. Okay, P1 is being held, so that's off the agenda. P2 is off the agenda. P3 is for introduction. That's Ordinance 61018, the map amendment for the planned development and special use for the open sales lot at 128 to 132 Chicago Avenue. P4, Ordinance 29018, amending the city code Title II, Chapter 8, historic preservation is for action. P5, Ordinance 47018, amending the definition of coach house in the city code Section 6-18-3 is for action. And that's it.
Terrific. Alderman Wilson, could you take us through Economic Development?
Thank you. O1 is the Small Business Workforce Development Funding Request from Evanston Rebuilding Warehouse. The staff and the Economic Development Committee are recommending approval of financial assistance to Evanston Rebuilding Warehouse in an amount not to exceed $15,000 to help facilitate job training and placement opportunities. I'll draw attention to the point that the organization is seeking a modification of the program guidelines, and they are seeking to be funded at the completion of the training program, instead of being reimbursed upon placing the trainees in a job for 90 days. O2, storefront modernization program application for squeeze box books located at 743 Main Street. Staff and Economic Development Committee are recommending approval of financial assistance on a 50-50 cost-sharing basis through the modernization program to squeeze box books located at 743 Main Street in an amount not to exceed $3,441.66 for new awnings. And that's for action. Also, the rebuilding warehouse was also for action, I don't think I mentioned that. O3 is the storefront modernization program application for stepping out on faith located at 1632 Orienton Avenue. Staff and Economic Development Committee are recommending approval of financial assistance on a 50-50 cost-sharing basis through the storefront modernization program to stepping out on faith at 1632 Orienton Avenue in an amount not to exceed $823.66 for an awning sign. Item O4 is approval of four entrepreneurship support program applications. Staff and Economic Development Committee are recommending approval of financial assistance, the prior one is also for action. O4, financial assistance through the entrepreneurship support program totaling $9,860 for the following four Evanston businesses, Hubris Wealth, iBoutique Closet, CNW Market, and Best One Built. And that is for action.
Second.
All right. City clerk, could you take the role on the consent agenda?
Yes. Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton, Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
All right, the consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council, eight to zero. We're going to move to the items that were pulled off. Alderman Fleming, if you could take us to A36.
Yes, A36, the disposition of waste transfer tipping fees slash station project funding. The committee actually made some modifications, so you should have the corrected ordinance 62-0-18 in front of you. What the committee passed tonight was the purchase of the environmental equipment, environmental monitoring equipment and study for the amount of $192,500 that will be paid for so that program can move forward. We also directed the city manager to set up a host agreement fund that he will bring back at a different time for a budget amendment, in the amount of $1,074, sorry, $747.90. So that's 1-0-7-0-7-4-7.90 that the city manager will bring back later. That will be where we hold the money that is spoken of in the memo that was collected since 2011 for future projects in the area. And so, I'm sorry, let me read the ordinance, I'm sorry, different thing.
Okay.
I mixed two things there.
Okay.
I'm very tired.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hopefully Alderman Fleming, I can provide some clarification. This is just to clarify that there are funds that were set aside in our general fund, and we wanted to make sure that those dollars are moved by council approval from the general fund into a, for lack of better words, neighborhood improvement fund that would be used for programming and infrastructure for the two-block radius north, south, east, and west of the waste transfer station. In addition to that, the future funds that would come from tipping fees, and I can't remember how many years, would also be contributed to that same neighborhood fund.
So totally strike what I said about the ordinance, because that has to do with the next item we pulled off.
Got it.
It's not confusing.
So I just have, I have a question. So the settlement was about 1.2 million, is that right?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
And I understood that they were looking for about $200,000 for the environmental monitoring, and then there would be about a million dollars left for either infrastructure or the program services that you were talking about.
That is correct.
And what I didn't know is, was there a previous agreement on the city council that they would get a portion of future tipping fees? Because that's what you just, you said that a second ago, and I wasn't aware of that.
If I can just for the benefit of current council clarification and new members, so there was always a discussion on what to do with the funds that were retained from the tipping fee, right? And so it was always, I think, previous discussion that those funds would be directed towards the neighbors that live in close proximity. But from the discussion that we had administrative public works, there wasn't clear direction from the council to have staff to move that. It was moved into our general fund, but now we have to move it out of our general fund with clarification so that we're able to utilize those dollars for future infrastructure projects.
Right. Okay, I definitely understood the set aside, so to speak, of the 1.2 million, so that that's accessible. Again, I still wasn't clear on future tipping fees that are generated, perhaps the city manager.
And that's what we're seeking to clarify this evening with the motion, sir.
Okay. Alderman Wilson?
Okay, well, we have something finite on the agenda, though, so I'm a little concerned about going beyond that. So I'm okay proceeding with what's on the agenda as far as allocation of the funds. We collected the money through the settlement, it was deposited in the bank account, and then it's incumbent on us to, you know, decide how to spend it. I don't think we've, you know, if we want to talk about creating a separate, you know, independent pool or fund or something like that, we could certainly do that, but that's not on the agenda. So I think we should pursue what's on the agenda. I'm inclined to approve this and, you know, get the work done, but beyond that, I think that's an additional or separate conversation.
Okay. Alderman Ruth Simmons?
How do I move approval? How do I move forward with this motion as we discussed in committee?
And that's what I was seeking to clarify. So I think if, and I'm totally ready to.
So based on Alderman Fleming reading that in a second, we can't vote on that?
So I think there are two separate motions, just as a point of clarification. There is the expenditure of the environmental dollars for approximately $200,000, I can look directly from whatever was stated. But then there was also a conversation and clarification regarding the use of the funds that were collected from the waste transfer station. And so part of the clarification that I'm seeking to just make clear, and if we need to have the discussion, then we'll have the discussion, is because in the committee, we, for those that were present, there was some confusion in terms of how those funds were going to be spent and where they're going to be spent. And so myself and Alderman Simmons made a very clear direction in terms of the funds, they were already there to be set aside into a neighborhood fund to be specifically used for that area. And so Alderman Wilson, I will respectfully ask, if you're looking to do something other than that, then I would like for you to state it. Because there is, there was a clear motion and direction coming out of Administrative and Public Works tonight.
Okay, well, I listened to part of it, but what I thought I heard was, there's a proposal to do some specific work studies and et cetera.
That is clear.
In the agenda, right? There was a question on what the method of payment would be. Would we actually write a check out of the general fund balance, or would we issue bonds to do that? And I thought it was paid from the funds. Is that what APW said?
APW decided, since there was the 1.2 so-and-so million dollars that was already, was already received by the city, you know, as part of this lawsuit, that the committee decided that they wanted to spend the 192.5, they did not want to bond that for the environmental study, that that should come out of these funds. And the remaining funds, since they were part of this lawsuit, the committee's directive was that they wanted the city manager to put those funds aside, so not any additional funds, but the funds that have already been collected, to be put aside into whatever kind of fund the city manager allocates, to be used in the waste transfer station area. So we did not, we did not directly cover what happens with future funds. I don't believe, I think our conversation, when I got the number from staff, was essentially this 1.2 million minus the 192.5 that we're going to use for the environmental impact study.
Okay, and so that's, I guess, it all made sense up until, you know, the, that doesn't mean anything, put it in a special fund that, you know, the city manager decides. So if there's going to be a special fund created, that should be on the agenda, you should talk about it.
Right, he's going to bring that back.
Yeah, yeah, so that's separate on what we're voting on tonight, so that's.
Right, but I needed to make it clear that we weren't going to bond this money for environmental.
Yeah, I think that's.
And that this was the dollar amount left over, because we wanted to make sure that the dollar amount, you know, the 1.2, when he comes back with whatever fund it's going to be, we know what the amount is, and we have a record of that, because that's the 1.2 minus the money we're spending for environmental tonight.
Right. I just didn't, you know.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Thank you. So I was very clear, I thought that it was clearly understood and restated by the city manager that we were removing the 1.2 minus the fees from the general fund and putting into a designated fund for the impact area. We moved on that, and I'm confused now on why it's up for discussion again.
And in addition, I made the amendment for the tipping fees.
Right.
So because we were here, because there was confusion back in 2016. So if anyone has any other thoughts on where that money should be spent around town, Robert Crown, the library, anything else, any other capital improvement fund, except for Howard Street, because you have a tiff down there, we need to discuss that, like, right now. Because we are in this mess, well, excuse me, not mess, but there was a little bit of confusion because it wasn't clarified. So we, I thought we clarified it in AP and W with a very clear motion and amendment, and if you feel otherwise, then let's make sure it's clear, so there's no confusion moving forward.
Okay, Alderman Rainey?
I had a very simple motion to make, but Alderman Fleming summed up exactly what happened in committee. We agreed to spend the 192.5,000 on the study and the equipment, the mechanical stuff, and to put the other funds in an identified account, not just the generic general fund. My suggestion would be that the last sentence in the motion be, and Alderman Simmons and Braithwaite and the community group discuss how to spend the balance of that money, and then I think there needs to be a committee discussion on the ongoing tipping fees that we haven't received yet. Which could very well be for that neighborhood, but maybe we should have that discussion.
I tend to agree, because, I mean, that was not part of this conversation.
We're talking a lot, but we're not disagreeing, so why don't we break it into two parts? Vote on the 192,000, and then vote on the separate fee, because there are two motions, so let's just vote on them.
I don't know if there's two motions, I mean, I think we've just made one motion. The only reason I mentioned the bringing back the fund was because I don't know the name of the fund, right? So the city manager said he's going to bring back a budget amendment with the name of the fund and, you know, all that, so I don't think that I'm changing, I'm not trying to change what we decide, I want to support.
It wasn't a spending thing he was going to bring back.
Yeah, he was just going to bring back, here's the name of the fund, this is how much money has on it, it's designated for this. So I think that we're all, and that's why I wanted to be very clear with my numbers tonight, because I wanted to be in the record that there is going to be a fund, I just don't want to say it's called Transfer Fund, and I have no idea what it's called, so that when we look at the budget in years to come, we all know what that money's for, we can keep track of it, it's there. And I think the city manager said it has to just be a budget amendment, since it's now going to be a separate fund.
All right, let's go.
When does this?
Okay, okay.
My light was on.
I know it is. Alderman, go ahead.
Before the second.
So don't worry about it.
But it's, we still are open for discussion.
So I want to be very clear on what's happening here, because I don't see where there really is much to discuss, because this is what was communicated to the community.
That is correct.
After the settlement and multiple community meetings back from 2016, before I was even on council. So we discussed this and voted on it in committee, and I don't know what conversation was had after committee that now there seems to be this confusion. So I want to be clear that I am supporting that we move forward, setting aside. So I want to be clear that I am supporting that we move forward, setting aside the 1.2 million dollars for the community, as well as the tipping fees going forward, to be designated specifically for the impact area.
That is correct.
And so I'm unsure about what the additional discussion is and how we have a new thing to vote on.
And it was this delay, I want to say, clearly, this was a delay at some point in 2016, that had members of the community blowing up our telephones and very upset with the action tonight and some of the confusion that was created. So I agree.
What about right now, like, an hour ago? So forget about 2016.
Oh, you're correct.
We're talking about a discussion that we just had, very open and public, like, in the last few, since I've been sitting here.
Trust me, you and I are on the same page. The question is, is the rest of our peers on the same page? And that's what we need to clarify before we move forward this evening.
I'm asking support from the city council.
So I, I feel like I'm supporting the council. I'm not sure what the question is. I think the only thing that is not in this motion is the future fees, which I'm happy to have. I made the assumption that future fees were in here. I wasn't here in 2015. I haven't been at any impact meetings.
So now that's true.
My assumption is the rest of the fees were in there. I thought that that's what the memo read already. So I just wanted to make sure, when the city manager comes back at our next meeting, that the number that we figured out tonight is the number that's in the account. And then obviously, I can't project the number that's going to be in there once we get more deposits, so I can't make a motion to put those numbers in there, because I don't know what the actual number is. Does that make sense? I just want to make sure the number we think is supposed to be in there is in there next week.
So now we're up to three.
All right. Alderman Wilson.
Okay. I think we're all agreeing on generally what we want to do. Number one, we want to approve this work. Right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Number two, we want to make sure that the tipping fee money is in a place, so we know how much is in there. And number three, we want to know how it's going to get used. Is that, is that right?
For three is that we want to make sure the future tipping fees are in there.
In the same fund for the same target area.
Right, you get, you get used in the future, going forward. The amount that's there and whatever else comes in.
Right.
And so I guess, you know, just from a, you know, what's on the agenda perspective, I feel like what's in here, it identifies the fact that we're going to approve the work. I think that's not a question. Then we've got the issue of where does the other money go? And so there was a motion in the committee to allocate it into a separate, you know, it's, it's a nonexistent account right now. So it's sort of, you know, to your point, you don't even know what to call it, so it's a little bit difficult, but I think we can all agree that it will get put into an account. I don't know, the answer, the question I don't know the answer to is, did we make a decision on what future money, how that will get placed account-wise? I just don't recall, and I don't see anything.
We just did in committee.
We did that in, in the administrative-
We just did it in committee.
To alleviate.
We just said, we, we specified that also the tipping fees going forward will also be in a designated, in the same designated fund that just happened in the last committee meeting.
But it's not on, it's not on the agenda, so the public doesn't have notice that we're going to say, okay, all this future money's going to get into this account.
Does that mean that it can't happen?
I support it happening, it's just, it's just not on the agenda.
So-
So I think we should just put it on the agenda.
But I think that was the amendment, so that's why we pulled it off of the, I pulled it off of the consent agenda, because we made some changes in committee.
Can somebody, I don't know, Legal or Wally-
Maybe Legal can tell us if we can make this motion.
Alderman Fleming, members of the council, you can give general direction to do this. My preference in talking with Alderman Fleming is that we come back and have an agendized item that creates the account and places the money there on a future agenda. I mean, I think the council's direction is clear, but I, in order to, you know, follow our normal protocols with budgeting, I think a separate action and addition is required, so.
And it's not an ad hoc-
But I think the intent of the council is clear.
Yeah. I support that and vote for it. I just want to make sure we do it the right way, so nobody can question it later.
So how did that change from committee until now? I mean, we did it in committee, so what happened between then and now that all of a sudden it is inappropriate?
Well, I wasn't on the committee, so I didn't, you know.
Well, we have Legal that's here, so why wasn't it caught then that we were not, like, in our right to do it that way?
I apologize.
Alderman, you're, the council's in their right. If the council would prefer to do this as a minute order, that is not our standard practice, but it's not illegal.
Fine.
And I think, I think the record is clear through the discussion this evening. Part of our job as staff is to try to keep some consistency of things. If this is a matter, given the circumstances, you just want to be done with tonight, then so be it. I just want to make sure that the motion is clear, that it's the remainder of the funds from the settlement, as well as for the future. If that's, if that's the case, then that is what will happen.
And that would be my very strong motion.
All right, I have a couple, I have a couple of questions, because I just, I understood the 1.2 million, I understood the commitment, the commitment for that and the monitoring and everything else. I was not aware of sort of all the future tipping fees, okay, going to that specific area. So in the past, city manager, is it the, was it the practice of the city that tipping fees that are generated there, maybe you can explain that to some of us, because I don't know, maybe I'm the only one up here that doesn't understand. I understand what tipping fees are, but I'm not sure if the city gets a portion of that, and if so, how much we do. And has past practice been that that's been collected and spent just in that area, or if it's spent citywide?
Given the late hour, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to try to be as simple as I can. The city instituted a tipping fee. The tipping fee was then, we were taken to court by the then operator of the waste transfer station. Those legal proceedings lasted a period of time. At the conclusion of the legal proceedings, we had a settlement agreement which allowed us to keep the money that was collected from these tipping fees, and instead of having a tipping fee, it was replaced with a host agreement fee. And Public Works Director's nodding his head, so I'm keeping this correct this, this late hour. Part of the agreement was that there would be no fee whatsoever for a period of time. That term ended April 1st?
December 31st.
And so we have received a monthly fee of, from the host agreement fee thus far, which amounted to $24,675. I had a larger number off the top of my head earlier in the evening. Mr. Stonebuck corrected it.
That's a monthly fee that we get? 24,600?
The, the, the sum of four months or three months, three months, is $24,675. So annualize that, it's about $100,000 a year. Prior to this evening, the city council had not discussed this matter since 2016. And so the issue of how the money would be spent that we received beginning December 31st has not previously been discussed by the council prior to this evening. There was discussion at the committee tonight that said that that money should be included with the corpus of the remaining money that was collected, and we were collecting a tipping fee. And so that's the issue before you. But we have not discussed this issue at the city council since May 23rd, 2016.
Personally, it seems to me like, in terms of future, in future tipping fees, it's something that should be put on the agenda and discussed. Again, we've got no projections in here in the packet or anything else about, about the future.
There is a projection in the packet.
About the amount.
About the one point.
No, about the tipping fee amount. It's in there.
On page 186, middle of the page, the initial fee is 75 cents per ton, beginning January 1. Host fee is estimated generally between 90 and 110, and based on what we received thus far, that seems to be a good number. But again, that matter had not been previously discussed by the council, the disposition of those funds, prior to this evening.
There's a point of information on page 189. It refers to the host fee going through 2034. And I, this is one of those rare equations where I wish I could phone a friend and contact Alderman Homes, based on the meetings that we've had with the residents and the emotion and history behind this. And so I guess I would respectfully ask to the members of council, we discussed this in AP&amp;W, we seek to clarify the use of the funds based on the host agreement. When this host agreement was set up, it was set up with the understanding that funds that would be collected would be used to benefit those that are most impacted. It doesn't say anything about funding future projects outside of it, doesn't mention Robert Crown, doesn't mention the library. I am no fool to the fact that we have a lot of budgetary needs, but I absolutely will not, will not, will not allow for these funds to be spent for any other area in town other than the designated area that we just identified. And if that's what you're seeking to do, I wish someone would just say it. And if that's not what you're saying, then we'll work through the logistics of making sure that we're clear tonight on how those dollars are going to be spent.
Okay, I've said it like, like, a bunch of times.
Okay, so then let's just move-
Okay, but I think you're, the logistics are not correct. With all due respect, I want to make sure we do it the right way. I support having the fund. I've always supported, from the word go, using the money for impacts from this, from the center. I've never suggested it be used for anything else.
Thank you for the clarification.
And I feel like you're kind of saying I am, so.
No, no, don't get defensive. Then you're clarifying what I heard before, so I'm not going to make it up. I, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, but I, I said, like, from the beginning, we all agree on this, like, let's just split it into two, vote on the two things, and move on.
All right. Couple, couple more lights, and then we're going to take a vote on all this stuff. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Nothing more, but Wally, you stated that it hadn't been discussed with council since 2016. It's certainly been discussed with the community since that point, and there's been commitments made, there's been opportunities for improvements identified, and environmental commitments made to the community. So I get that it hasn't been discussed on council, but we certainly, I know that I certainly was moving forward with the understanding that this money was designated for the areas that are smelling the waste and dealing with the traffic and the trash blowing in the streets and everything else that has been an environmental injustice. So I'm hoping that we can move forward with a vote on this.
Alderman Rainey.
I just want to add very simply that this money has to be spent, the ongoing tipping fee has to be spent on the consequences created by having a transfer station in your neighborhood. It's not like it's on the outskirts of town, it's in a neighborhood. So I can't see anybody on this council not agreeing to that.
Alderman Rainey, oh, Fleming?
I was going to just call the question.
Call it, do. Go, go ahead, call the whole question.
And just, I will just go ahead and say, so that everyone on the council feels heard, I will call two questions. One will be for the spending, one will be for the fund, the amount that goes, that's in there now, and the amount that future.
Fine.
Thank you. All right, so I move that we approve item A 3.6, the disposition of waste transfer tipping fees and station project funding. So I move for us to spend $192,500 out of this fund for the purchase of environmental impact study equipment, the study and the equipment.
Second.
Clerk Reed, could you take the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Okay, the motion, that motion passes eight to zero by the, by the city council. Okay, Alderman Fleming.
All right, 3.6, disposition of waste transfer tipping fees and station project funding. I move for the city manager to create a fund that will hold the 1,774,000. Did I say that right? Sorry, I'm seeing double. 1-0-7-0-7-4-7 dot 90, as well as the future income from the tipping station fees.
Okay, city clerk, could you take the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
All right, motion passes eight to zero. Okay. Let's go to A 9.
A 9, ordinance 62-0-18, amending the hours for the alcohol service. This also was amended in committee. We directed city staff to change the ordinance here, so you should have this ordinance in front of you. The new language in section B particularly reads that hours during which sale of unlawful, lawful may be extended by written order of the city council. We struck out the local liquor commissioner there and added city council for the periods not to exceed four hours prior to opening upon written application by the licensee, stating that the reasons for the requested extension and the dates for which the extension is sought, the request must be provided to the city in writing that unless two weeks prior to the date the extension is requested, or the request will be automatically denied. The rest remains the same. So I move approval for that.
Second.
Okay, seeing, seeing no lights, all, take the roll, please.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
All right, A, A 9 passes eight to, eight to zero.
And so that was for introduction. Could I move to suspend the rules for adoption? Because it was for a specific application that this came up, and the event is in June, so if we put this off, it's not going to be done in time for the, for the event.
Second.
Okay.
They still have to apply and go through another step, so.
All right, city clerk, could you take the roll?
Yes. Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
All right, do we have to take the role first to suspend the rules? Is that what we're doing now?
No.
No, we're going to suspend the rules in action.
Yeah, suspend the rules in action, so.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
All right. So ordinance 62-0-18, amending hours of alcohol service amended as it was in the committee, passed for introduction and action. That's A 9. P 2, Alderman Fisk.
I think we, didn't we do P 1 first? P 1 is being held.
Yeah, you said held in committee was P 1.
Right. P 1 is going to run together with P 2, so that, that is being held.
So P 2 is being held in committee?
No. P 2, we're going to vote for introduction tonight. So ordinance 59018, granting a special use permit for a planned development located at 1727 Oak in the down, in the D 3 Downtown Core Development District. That's for introduction.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing no lights, city clerk, could you take the roll on P 2?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
All right, P 2, ordinance 59-0-18, granting a special use permit for a planned development located at 1727 Oak Avenue in the D 3 Downtown Core District, passes the city council for introduction on a vote of seven to one. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and move to call the wards. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Wilson.
Okay, fourth ward meeting, Wednesday, 6:30 at Robert Crown. Thank you.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Thank you. We have a, our fifth ward meeting is this Thursday, 7:00 PM at the city of Evanston in the room G 300, and we have a special presentation which will give information on how to sign up for our inclusionary housing waitlist and details on our first four units of inclusionary units that are going to be available in our ward on noise. Please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sufferton.
Joint sixth and seventh ward meeting on June 5th at the Ecology Center, 7 o'clock. And I'd also just like to acknowledge the passing of Mary Jane Kane, longtime six-ward resident, lived at 2335 Forest U, raised nine kids, a great lady.
Wow. Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
I've been asked to request of the Plan Commission, and I'm not sure if it should be the Plan Commission or Planning and Development, that zoning variations having to do with the construction of fences in historic district not have to go to the Preservation Commission but be able to be approved by the staff member in charge of the Preservation Commission. So, I'll leave this. Where should it go?
P and D.
Huh?
P and D. P and D should it?
P and D. That's where I want to send it. P and D. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fleming?
Ninth ward meeting, this Thursday, 7:00 PM in the lower level of Pope John School on Washington. We will have a presentation by city staff on the budget as well as a presentation by the public library.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of things. First ward meeting on Tuesday, June 5th, so a number of ward meetings that night, but first ward meeting that night, 7 to 9:00 PM at the library downtown as usual. Postcards are going to be mailed out this time, so that'll be helpful. Question for the city manager, I've received a number of inquiries about the changes to the Illinois Condominium Property Act that require disclosure of private information. Is that something that we as a city weigh in on or not? Do we have a home rule, possibility of withdrawing from that or?
Alderman Fisk, members of the council, I don't believe so. Ms. Mason Cup, I know, has done a fair amount of research and also has consulted with the Corporation Council's office in the city of Chicago. I apologize, I don't know the latest on that, so I'd be happy to get you that information off agenda.
I'm sorry? Okay, then I...
And I think the question is the juxtaposition of the Chicago's action with the state action, and again, we're happy to follow up and get you more details. I know that Ms. Mason Cup's on top of it.
Okay, I would like to follow up on that fairly quickly since a number of people have been expressing their strong concern. I believe I referred this via email, but I just wanted to make sure that was happening. The other referral that I have is to the Rules Committee. I have to say that I've been concerned over the past several meetings just about the way that the public and we interact at some of the meetings together. And I guess what brought that on to me more clearly was the group of Girl Scouts that was here last time, and I, I felt that we need to be really cognizant of the behavior that goes on in this chamber. So I'd like to look at maybe some steps that we might take to improve not only communication but civility. I sent around to, I believe, Mr. City Manager, you forwarded my email at my request to the rest of the aldermen. The state of Minnesota has a community relations program that they use, and I'll tell you, my concern about this is that some of the dialogue is so unpleasant that I'm concerned that it discourages people from participating more fully in our, our city conversations. It also concerns me that there may be some people who don't want to run for public office because they, of all they have to go through or all they see on television or at home. So I would like to start that dialogue, and I think the way to do it is through the Rules So that's my, that's my referral, and that's the reason why.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess for Alderman Fleming, I would like to make a referral to the Human Services Meeting. We, there has been a tremendous amount of work that's been done with the Alternatives to Arrest Committee, and would love to be able to bring it back just to make a formal report to the Human Services Committee, an update, I guess.
That's actually, Alderman Revel is the chair of that one.
She's the chair?
Okay.
She is.
All right.
I'll pass along to the city manager. Thank you. Hey, if she's still, if she's up, that's crazy, but...